Chaska Planning Commission, Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting, Liz, can you? Take role?
Yes, Commissioner Austin.
Here.
Aswa.
Yes.
Campbell.
Here.
Gori.
Yeah.
Kerber.
Here.
Olson.
There.
Purdy. Urbanski. And Chairperson Brass.
Here.
With that, we would look to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Commissioner Olson makes a motion, or a second?
Second.
Second by Kerber, all those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Agenda adopted. Then we have visitor presentation, if there's visitors today that would like to address the commission. That's something that's not on the agenda. Yeah, I guess we'll check anyone on Zoom.
Uh, no one on Zoom.
Okay. So with that, there is nobody, we will move on to approve the previous meeting minutes. If everyone had a chance to review those. Is your motion to approve the meeting minutes?
Motion to approve the previous minutes.
Commissioner Austin?
Second.
Aswa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Motion carries. And that move into consent items, which does not look like we have any tonight. So we will move on to Article seven, action items, public hearing. Recommend approval of the comprehensive plan. TPA update. Local surface water management plan, Appendix G, Chaska PC, two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty.
Thank you.
The city can take it away.
Yep, thank you, Planning Commission members. We have a presentation this evening for the comprehensive plan amendment. For the Appendix G portion of our comp plan, which is our local service water management plan. And I'm going to hand it over to Brent, who is the city's water resources coordinator. And he's going to kind of go through the updates that are happening within that appendix.
Here we are, right? Excellent. Well, um, as Liz said, this is a proposed update to our stormwater design standards. My name is Brent Alcott, I'm the Water Resources Coordinator for the city. You want to jump to the first one? So just a little bit of background of why we're updating. The purpose of this is to maintain compliance with the primary reason of why we're proposing to update this is to maintain compliance with our municipal separate storm sewer system permit with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency. It's commonly referred to as MS four permit. Provides a framework of minimum control measures that we do as the city to reduce and eliminate pollution going to our surface water. So our storm sewer system is separate from our sanitary sewer system. So it is not treated in the way that the sanitary sewer is. So we have different practices that we do to reduce the pollutants going to the surface water. The, our current MS four permit has some changes in language of how we deal and view and manage stormwater. So that's why we are proposing some changes to maintain compliance with that. We also thought it would be a good time to do some updates just to maintain consistency with current interpretation and existing city policy. As we were going through, we found some areas that just needed to be cleaned up a little bit. And the final purpose was to maintain consistency with other regulatory agencies. Both the Carver County Water Management Organization and the lower Minnesota River Watershed District have also updated their standards. So we just wanted to make it consistent for developers and applicants coming through. So there are more, one set of rules that they would need to follow rather than competing different, uh, different standards. Go ahead. Oh, so our stormwater design standards are split into really four major categories. There's the submittal requirements. That really includes the technical details of what goes into the plan and what we're looking for when we're viewing a stormwater design. The water quantity standard, that is the more commonly referred to as the rate at which stormwater leaves the site. As properties are developed, a lot oftentimes, the stormwater rate is increased. So we look to reduce that going off of the site. Water quality is the other criteria that we're looking for. That's how clean the water is leaving the stormwater practice. And finally, the water volume. This really provides a framework of how the stormwaters manage to reduce the amount of volume that runs off the site through different practices. So just highlighting a few of the more significant changes or highlighting some of the key details that we went through. The first change that we're proposing isn't really a change. It's firming up our language in rule. That was our current city policy. So a slope stability analysis is something that we've often requested for developments that are building along a bluff or a steep slope area. And what that does is we have a geotechnical engineer, the developer has a geotechnical engineer that looks at the soil structure along the bluff edges to determine a setback from the houses to make sure that there's a, uh, a safe margin for that setback in the event of a steep slope or bluff failure. Like I said, it's something we currently ask for in our policy. We just wanted to put it in language, so it's a requirement. The second, soil decompaction. As sites are mass rated, soils are often compacted, which increases the amount of runoff from the site. So this again just is putting it in rule that following mass grading, those native soils would be decompacted before spreading the topsoil. And it's an existing requirement, we are just setting it in language. And finally, private stormwater facility maintenance agreement requirements. All stormwater management systems require maintenance. For city-owned systems, we include it in our maintenance program. But for private projects where the city is not the entity that's maintaining it, we want to make sure that we have the ability to ask those owners to go back and maintain those facilities to function as designed. The next section I want to highlight some things are in the water quantity section. The first one is the discharges from stormwater systems to slopes, steep slopes and ravines. Concentrated flow from stormwater systems can cause erosion on steep slopes and ravines. So we're setting some language here that does not allow for discharges to steep slope and ravines unless there's no alternative location to discharge. And in that case, they would need to provide some armament of that steep slope or ravine to make sure that there's no erosion or downstream impacts. Second point that I wanted to make is, again, with our bluff and steep slope systems. The, when ponding systems are placed on top of a bluff or a steep slope area. If that system is overtopped, it could result in a pond burn failure. And our current policy is to size that system so that it can retain a ten-inch rain event. So with climate shifting, we want to make sure that our systems are resilient. So if there is large rain events that were not impacting the downstream resources. Again, it's no large change from our current policy, just setting it in language. And then finally, the stormwater discharge rate for redevelopment sites. The way that our standard is currently written, we don't differentiate between new development and redevelopment sites. We found that's been very challenging for redevelopment sites to meet our current standard. So what we're proposing is to split those two into two different categories. For new development sites, it would still have to meet our current rate control standard. For redevelopment sites, they wouldn't have to meet that strict standard, but would have to match the existing runoff rate from the site. So there wouldn't be any increase in runoff rate. We found that in the past few redevelopment projects, it's been pretty challenging to meet our current standards. We just wanted to make sure that we're not having to go through a variance or a relief from rule process for something that, uh, that we didn't need to do. Water quality, this is how clean the water is leaving the site. So the two pollutants of concern that we most look for are phosphorus, which is a nutrient that grows algae and can impact water resources and sediment. So currently, our standard is more of a one-size-fits-all pond sizing requirement. And what we're proposing is to, instead of forcing the ponds to be a certain size, give developers more flexibility to meet those same nutrient and sediment reduction numbers that would have been achieved with a ponding, with a one-size-fits-all pond, but allow some flexibility with the design. We found that there's a lot of more innovative stormwater solutions that still achieve the same goals. But allows more flexibility with the site design.
Excellent.
Excellent. And lastly, this is the section for, that was, that we're proposing to remove and replace. So the MS four permit requires a certain reduction in water volume generated on the site. So our previous section was a little bit out of date. And rather than going through and changing the language, which didn't really fit, we're proposing just to remove that and update with new language. We did review the current standards with the Carver County Water Management Organization and the lower Minnesota Watershed District and crafted some language that was consistent with both of those and met the, our MS four permit requirements. This provides some flexibility with site design. If there's a sequencing process where they would first look to reduce their volume by infiltrating or letting the water soak into the ground. But if site conditions didn't allow for that, there are some other options that developers or applicants could use to meet those standards as well. So what we're asking for today is recommend, recommendation of approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to the local surface water management plan based on the draft design standards that were included in your packet. If anyone has any questions about other items that weren't covered kind of in the summary here, I'd be happy to take any questions about the proposed changes.
Something I'm just going to, from a process perspective. Something that has occurred here, since this is a conference plan amendment. That's required to have a public comment period, so that, that public comment period has happened. And that includes, you know, relevant agencies and neighboring districts. So Brett was talking about the Carver County Water Management Organization and also the lower Minnesota Watershed District. Those are the two, called Watershed Districts that Chaska is a part of, or that, you know, come into play in Chaska. They both have had an opportunity and they've provided feedback and comments, you know, to what we're proposing here. Their comments, um, a lot of times are more about, you know, clarification or points clarification, things like that. Nothing that really causes to make any changes to what we were being proposed. By and large, they're fine with what we're moving forward with, and we've been in communication with them and coordination with them throughout this process. So I just want to make you aware that, you know, that opportunity has happened. This also ends up being a public hearing this evening because it is a conference plan amendment.
Thank you. Bring it back to commission. Anyone have questions for staff?
Got a question for Brent. Can you go over one more time about the, the stormwater quality? Because that's, anecdotally, that's a frequent complaint with people. You know, the green water due to nutrient runoff. Design flexibility. What exactly, because?
Yeah, so currently, the way that the standard is written, it provides a required pond size of a permanent pool of water. So that amount of water is based off of a two-and-a-half-inch storm event. And all of our modeling has shown that that provides about sixty percent reduction in phosphorus and an eighty percent reduction in sediment. So rather than having a one-size-fits-all requirement of requiring a large stormwater pond. We've changed it to requiring calculations based on the design that shows at least a sixty percent reduction in phosphorus and an eighty percent reduction in sediment. Second to that, our current rule, and this is proposed to be changed, we do have a requirement that new developments must not have an increase in nutrient runoff from the existing conditions. And we review that during our process as well.
So this, so this change ends up shifting more to a focus on performance rather than, you know, prescribing a, a design size, right?
So it's not, you know, taking the eye off the ball as far as the?
Right, right.
Helpers accountable for.
It's recognizing that, you know, there's room for innovation. There may be other approaches that are more efficient depending on the site or depending on the amount of water that is anticipated to be received. And so rather than saying, hey, you need to build a bucket this size, we're saying, hey, you need to build a bucket that sufficiently cleans the water. Right? And that, that's just kind of shifting the focus a little bit there.
Thank you.
So expanding on that question. So used to ponds, you know, that's pretty much been the standard. So you said there's other creative methods. Can you give us such as, it's like, what, what do you do other than a pond?
Sure, so, uh, there's a filtration basin would be the first one that would be most applicable that I think most people would understand. So rather than having a pool of water that has, that's permanently filled with water. You can create a system that has a series of underdrains or drain tile or pipes below it. And you put filtration media, so it's a mixture of sand and compost, and then put plantings into there. So rather than cleaning the water by letting it go into a pond, which settles out that sediment. It goes into a basin where that, that soil filters the water and cleans it before leaving. So instead of having an open pond, you'd have a pond that would only fill up during times of precipitation. And then it would drain down and filter that water through that filter media.
And so that's where we've got, you know, you all are, you see ponds all the time, right? And there's stormwater ponds all over the city and all over most cities, right? All ponds are not necessarily created equal, right? So some of them are, are the ponds that are, you know, collecting the water and the water just kind of sitting there to allow that sediment to settle to the bottom. Like Brent's talking about, other ones are built to have filtration come through. Sometimes it's part of a system where it's kind of doing, you know, there's ponds that are connected together where the water is going from one to the next as it kind of cycles through that system and it's being cleaned. But you're talking about, um, you know, concerns around algae blooms and things like that. Sometimes, uh, due to the design and the purpose intent of that pond, um, we would actually expect that it turns green from time to time. That's because it's absorbing those nutrients and the conditions are right. And, um, you know, plants are going to grow in that. So although folks don't always enjoy that, uh, you know, they're, they're maybe hoping for more open water body experience. That's not necessarily what they're designed to do. Yep.
You mentioned that there were projects that happened that may have been done differently. Could you kind of, I mean, did we, from your seat, do you think over the past two years, three years that we've seen projects come through? Would they have been able to do something differently if this was already in place? Or were they still in the mode of, that's the way it's always done, so they put a pond?
I guess some may have been done differently. Now, the other thing that we've kind of been, how we've been applying this standard is, we still allow that flexibility. But applicants or developers have to go through one additional step. So they would have to calculate the nutrient reduction of a pond if they were to have that bucket. And then whatever design they went with as an alternative design, they would just have to show that their design was at least or greater nutrient removable. So we did allow that flexibility, but it was just kind of clunky, cumbersome to kind of go through that additional step that still got us to the end goal. Wet ponds aren't going to go away just because they are really effective at storing water. And stormwater rate, the rate at which water leaves the site is always a challenge in Chaska just because of our topography and our bluffs and steep slope systems. So we're, there's still going to be a place for those ponds to, for, to store that volume of water. But it could allow for some different designs in the water quality component of it.
Now the developer calculate no matter what if they?
Right, right. I mean, it's, in, in the, in the stormwater engineering world, it's kind of assumed that, that two-and-a-half-inch rain event storage equates about a sixty percent reduction in phosphorus and an eighty percent reduction in sediment. So rather than having to have them go through and show that in one more step, we're just saying, you need to meet these requirements at sixty and eighty percent reductions.
So one example of a location where stormwater is handled, you know, differently than just a typical pond would be Fireman's Park. Where there's very large tanks that are underneath the parking lot there that are capturing the stormwater. And that's, you know, that's all underground, you don't see it. There's a system that does stick out of the ground as you're walking through there. Trying to think where it would be, so it's in the main entrance.
In the middle.
Yep, kind of right in the middle, you'll see a metal box that's sitting there. I think there's actually a sign there that describes what it is. But that's a water reuse system. And so we capture the water in those large tanks underground. And maybe this year, the tank probably doesn't have a lot of water in it. But typically here, um, that water then gets used to irrigate the park. And that's one example of something that would be, you know, obviously that's not a pond. And so, uh, and there are other locations that have implemented underground tanks. Not just, you know, city-owned and city-done projects, either there's private projects that do that in some locations. And that's often when you have a more constrained site that, obviously, Fireman's Park, if we had put a pond there, um, it'd be a very different outcome that would have happened.
So with the measurement, so we're just measuring phosphorus and sediment? What about, and this is, you know, some people are more sensitive than others, but the sulfur? You know, some of the storm ponds around, boy, they get really strong after a while.
Yeah, so what we're looking at is the fluids that are generated in the stormwater runoff itself. The order that you're referring to is from the anaerobic conditions in the pond as a result of those nutrients going into the pond, like, like, uh, make the sand before. The ponds are really effective at filtering out phosphorus, which is the food source of algae and plants. And as a, uh, as an effect of that, are really effective at growing algae. And they use up the oxygen. So that anaerobic condition under the pond is, is what you're referring to. But in terms of the pollutants, the primary ones that we're looking at are phosphorus and sediment. In our design criteria, in the submittal requirements, there are other things that we look at, like for trash debris, floatables, things like that that are incorporated there.
I'm just going to note, I mean, it's not, it's not unusual that, um, you know, stormwater, I mean, stormwater is part of everything you all reviewed, right? And there's stormwater ponds or some sort of, that needs to occur in nearly every project that comes through. Often, it's an afterthought, um, because it's pretty well cooked. And so I just want to credit, like, this is the guy behind that curtain who's doing all that work, his development is coming through. Working with the engineering teams, making sure that they understand what our requirements are. Being willing to roll up his sleeves and get creative to find solutions, hopefully make projects work. And, you know, by the time it gets to all of you, we don't really talk a whole lot about stormwater. Maybe we should more, but, you know, often it's pretty well cooked, right? And so there's not a whole lot to talk about. That's because of the work that these guys have been behind the scenes. So it's kind of, I think, fun to have Brent here today and maybe, you know, pop the hood a little bit and let you understand what he does.
I mean, reading through it, there's a lot of technical information, so I would imagine that, um, the expert knows better than we do.
Assuming that everything is what it's supposed to be. Yeah.
We'll open it up to public hearing at seven twenty-four. We have visitors here, are you here for this and want to speak? No, is there anyone on Zoom?
If anyone on Zoom is here for this, uh, you can raise your hand. Nope, I, nobody on Zoom.
Okay, and we will close the public hearing at seven twenty-five. And bring it back to commission again, if there's any last questions, comments, otherwise we can move it to a motion if someone would like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the comprehensive plan amendment to Section five point three point two of the Appendix G of the local surface water management.
Commissioner Austin, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Baswa, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll go to our second item on the agenda, or action items, seven B. Recommend approval of the concept plan for the public safety facility, City Chaska PC, two thousand and twenty-three dash twenty-one. Liz, I will let you take it from here. Thank you, Brett.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Matt and in commission. We have a concept plan application in front of us that actually is being proposed by the city itself. This is our public safety facility project that's coming through. So the site in question is highlighted in orange on the above aerial. So this site is located kind of in the middle portion of the city, right off of Angler Boulevard or County Road ten on its northern side. And it's surrounded mainly by residential, both detached, single-family and multifamily on most of its edges. We also have the Chaska Grand View Development and Commercial Development immediately east. And the site also contains the park that's known as, um, which is a public park and then the fire station that exists today. To give you a little bit of background on this site, it was back in two thousand and twenty-one that the city held its annual retreat with council members. And during that time, a plan was developed and created known as our strategic plan. So that was adopted back in two thousand and twenty-one and reaffirmed in March of this year. Really, that plan looks at six visionary outcomes that look ahead for the city, so up to two thousand and twenty-five for this strategic plan. So it lists off several visionary outcomes that the city would like to see the city implement by year two thousand and twenty-five. One of those visionary outcomes that's listed is Chaska having quality city facilities. So being able to provide facilities that are adequate in meeting both the growth and the pride of the, the community. So specifically within that visionary outcome, the public safety facility was denoted and was planned to be a two-year implementation after the strategic plan was adopted. So we're looking two years later now, hence why we're seeing a concept plan come forward for this specific facility. So the city did conduct a neighborhood meeting on July twenty-sixth. And again, this is in relation to the city's new neighborhood meeting requirements prior to concept plans being reviewed. So that occurred on July twenty-sixth of this year. It was held at the fire station. All of the affected property, properties within five hundred feet were notified and were allowed to come to the fire station, kind of more in an open house style to meet with city officials, city staff, to kind of talk about the new plan for the public safety facility. We also set up a booth during River City Days, which happened between July twenty-eighth and thirtieth. And also had city staff, um, at those booths to be able to answer questions and provide information regarding the public safety facility too. So during both those occasions, comments were received from the public in relation to the public safety facility. And just a summarization of what was received during both those occasions, looked at several elements of the plan that was proposed. So the security fence, which is the fence that wraps around the police parking lot. There were some comments just in terms Um, there were some comments just in terms of the overall look of that security fence and, uh, making sure that it's an appealing, um, decorative type fence and not really more of a an enclosure or a, um, something that looks prison-like, I think, is, uh, what was referred to. Um, also having a balance of trees and grass on the south berm, uh, adjacent to the residential to the south. Um, they preferred to have, uh, kind of a good mix between grass and trees versus having a very dense um, installation of trees on on the berm so that they could uh, maintain some of their view sheds, um, into the the park area and into the overall site, uh, from that location. There were also comments provided on the location of the park and where that should be, uh, trail maintenance. Um, uh, the amount of park green space being proposed. And then also having access to the pedestrian trails during the construction of the new public safety facility. Um, want to show the existing conditions of the site, uh, which is shown on this slide here. Uh, so the overall site is nine point three seven acres in size. There's two different parcels that make up the property, one that holds the fire station and then one that's kind of more geared towards the the public park. The fire station is zoned, public buildings are P two. Um, and the public park area was a part of a kind of overarching, um, platte. Uh, so it was a part of a planned multi-use district, PMD, um, zero three, to be exact. Both properties are guided in the comprehensive plan to be, uh, public use or public park. Um, so the proposal to move forward with a new public safety facility is, uh, consistent with the guidance um, for this property. The fire station that exists today is a two-story building that totals approximately twenty three thousand square feet. And you can see the outline of that, um, on this drawing here. Um, it kind of resembles a hawk, uh, outline, which was kind of intentional to uh, show the pride of Chaska and the Chaska Hawk, um, mascot. Um, there is a berm that currently exists on the south side. Uh, so that was also put in place when the fire station went in to provide buffering between the fire station and the residential to the south there. Um, and that has a sprinkling of mature trees on it as well. Access into the site comes from Angler Boulevard or County Road ten. Uh, so there are three points of access shown on that county road, two of which provide kind of full circulation around the building and into the back parking lot. Um, and then a larger access which connects into the apparatus space, um, of the existing facility for the fire trucks to use to get onto Angler Boulevard. And then the park space is oriented on the west portion of the site, and that is known as Meadow Park. And then pedestrian trails, which are highlighted, um, in kind of the thinner gray outline of the site both come from a couple spots from the residential areas to the south and then connect into Chaska Place Apartments, um, to the west there as well. Just a couple images of views, um, into and out of the site. If we need to refer back to those, it just gives a good idea of, um, kind of the existing conditions out there. So specifically what the request entails this evening is a concept plan request, uh, which would involve or include the construction of a new public safety facility, which would house both the fire and police departments. Um, it would total approximately ninety eight thousand square feet, both, uh, um, below grade and above grade. Um, so both the basement and this, uh, small second floor, uh, above, um, total into that square footage. But the overall building footprint totals about sixty four thousand square feet in size. Um, with the new facility, so again, the existing fire station will be torn down, um, and uh, the building will be completely rebuilt, um, with this plan. As a part of that, uh, with some of the the site planning that's happening around the building, it will require revisions to the city park area for Meadow Park as well. Uh, so this is the concept plan layout on this slide here, um, starting with access into the site, uh, the access, uh, proposal shows four separate access points, um, into, uh, the overall site. So the western access on, uh, Angler Boulevard here would be primarily a public entrance or the only public entrance into the site to access the public parking area as well as the park space. Um, this will also uh, be utilized by, um, the full-time fire staff who will house out of this location as well as, um, other fire staff who are coming in for training during the week will utilize, um, firefighter parking and some of the public parking. The police department, uh, will also have access to their secured parking lot area on the south as well on the western side. Um, the interior access points are those larger um, uh, access points which will connect into the proposed apparatus space, uh, for the fire station. So hence why they are much larger, um, in width compared to the other access points is this is where the fire trucks, um, will come into and out of the site for fire calls. Um, and then the east access will be primarily a, um, fire and police access point. It probably will be the main access point, uh, that they will utilize, uh, during their shifts. Um, this will provide access to both, um, the firefighter parking that's behind uh, the fire apparatus space as well as the secured fencing, uh, for the police parking. The ramp, um, down to the basement parking will also happen on that west side. So hence why we say this eastern access will probably operate as kind of that main fire and police, um, access for the site. And the west access will mainly operate as that public facing access. Uh, the shape of the building is primarily U-shaped or maybe C-shaped, uh, just based on this, uh, viewing here. Um, the colorization that you're seeing on this site on the site plan shows, uh, kind of the breakup of what's being used by fire, which is in red. And then what's used by police, which is in kind of that darker blue or purple color. And then the public functions of the building are shown in kind of that turquoise color. So um, there will be, um, kind of a, a large lobby area off the main entrance of the building on the west side here, which will have a fire history viewing area kind of off that front main entrance. Uh, there will also be kind of an assembly, uh, training room area here um, that the public would have access to, but would also be um, a big component that both police and fire would be able to utilize for their training um, or any briefing meetings, um, that they have, uh, for their operation. Uh, so in total with the parking that's proposed for the facility, a total of a hundred and seventy five parking stalls are proposed, um, and that's kind of the ultimate, uh, count for the site. Uh, initial construction would show a hundred and forty one stalls with thirty four proof of parking. Uh, so the proof of parking is really meant for, um, uh, use or for uh, when the fire department and police department expand in the future, they'll have access to additional stalls. Uh, so fourteen stalls, um, for fire are shown on the north side of the site that would connect into their main parking lot. And then twenty additional stalls are shown on the south side, um, that would connect into the police department. Parking lot as well. And again, these numbers are based off of, um, kind of the ultimate and, uh, biggest use of the property. Um, so there have been, um, a number of conversations in terms of what's needed, uh, from the fireside and the police side, uh, today. But also, um, as the community continues to grow and the departments continue to grow alongside the community, um, that there is flexibility within the parking to allow for future um, growth within this facility. So again, those numbers are based off of, um, the assembly use within the building for both the public and fire and police side of things. And then the, uh, employees for, uh, fire and for the police side, kind of on their biggest shift, uh, during the days. So we're looking at the numbers based on kind of that, that grand scheme of things, uh, for existing, but also for future, so that there is flexibility, uh, to be able to, uh, grow into the space and still, um, have, uh, ability to, uh, have future growth as well, uh, within this facility. Um, a total of twenty nine stalls are going to be underground and that will be primarily used by, uh, the police department. So that's basically where they're going to store their squad cars is underground as well as, um, some SWAT equipment and vehicles as well. Um, so those twenty nine stalls of the a hundred and seventy five would be kind of that, that storage, uh, parking area for the police. Um, and then lastly on this, um, slide that I wanted to mention is there is, um, a plan to continue a, uh, berm on the south side here facing the residential to the south. Excuse me. The existing berm and trees that exist today will have to be uh, removed as a result of this new site plan, but the goal is to replace that, um, in some fashion, uh, with height and, um, plantings on top to kind of maintain uh, that buffer that you get between the residential and, uh, the building and site plan here. Um, I just wanted to note that we, we did get some commentary during the neighborhood meeting process about their, um, desire to have, um, a little bit more of a balanced, um, uh, planting plan on the berm and the plan that we're showing uh, with our concept plans, the middle, uh, reflects those comments. Um, so before we had kind of a double layer of landscaping occurring on that southern berm here, and we pared it back uh, a bit, uh, to be, um, consistent with some of the feedback that we received from neighbors. So this plan, um, is showing kind of the planting plan and the conceptual, um, green space, trees and kind of how everything lays out from that perspective, also giving a couple section drawings showing the existing, um, birmingham and section of the site with the residential, uh, to the south and how it's going to change, um, with the new building and uh, parking and birmingham that's planned to occur. So there are some changes just in terms of where the, the Birmingham gets pushed back to, uh, but again, the goal is to try to maintain to some extent, um, a similar view shed there that exists today. The site plan will obviously be closer uh, than what exists today. But again, um, the purpose or the goal is to try to maintain that buffer as much as possible. Um, also just want to note, um, which I'll bring up on another slide too, is one of the things we'll be kind of working on as this continues to go down the process is, um, just how the overall park area fits into the site plan, uh, for the public safety facility. Um, you know, this is still a work in progress and we're still working through details, um, with both the Parks and Recreation, uh, Commission and, uh, also, uh, dealing with stormwater on site and how that gets achieved to accommodate uh, the site, um, are kind of two things that are intertwined right now in terms of um, how those both play into each other. Um, so those are things that we'll be continuing to work on and understand and continuing to coordinate with the Park and Rec uh, Commission in terms of, um, their comments, uh, pertaining to the park and and how that gets, uh, fitted fit in, uh, with the overall site plan. Uh, in terms of the design of the building that's being sought, um, I'm showing the um, kind of conceptual, uh, layout or floor plans, um, of the building, uh, for the first floor, which is the right, uh, drawing here. And then for uh, the second story, the small area on the second story, which is, uh, the upper left and then the basement area, which is the bottom left here. For civic buildings in particular, um, you know, we've tried to take the approach of, uh, uh, nodding, uh, our heads to kind of the history of Chaska. And bringing in elements, um, that are traditional, um, or historic and to some degree, while also trying not to mimic, um, entirely the historic character and still capturing a contemporary look. Um, so it's, it's a balancing act, uh, between the two, but also, um, just understanding where the city has come from, uh, just from a historical standpoint. Um, so the images above are kind of an analysis of, um, other elements that you see within the city, both from uh, contemporary buildings, but but also historical buildings, um, and also looking to, um, a previous, uh, probably the oldest, um, fire station that the city has ever had uh, on that upper right image, um, and bringing in elements that kind of tie back to the history of Chaska and specifically a, a well-known history of the prominence of, um, the fire department, uh, early on in the community and, uh, the first, uh, fire station that was constructed within downtown. So looking to that and seeing where inspiration can come for, uh, the building and some of the elements that you see in that. So the materials that we're kind of looking at right now, uh, would include, uh, predominantly a Chaska brick application, um, an inclusion of some stone masonry, uh, perhaps some metal paneling, and then obviously some glass. And looking to our code again for, uh, public buildings and what's required, uh, for public buildings, uh, to meet in terms of class one and class two materials that are required on those buildings. Um, also want to show a couple, um, views, um, that were taken from across the site, just to show, uh, what you'll see from certain angles um, of the site and nearby properties. Um, so the two images here really look at on the south side of the site in terms of, uh, the building. So the building on the south side, what's being seen from that edge is mainly a one-story building. And then as you get closer to Angler Boulevard, um, it'll step up in height and, um, get to that second level and even third level for the training tower for the fire department. Then here's a couple more views. So the top one is, uh, a northwest perspective. So this would be looking from Angler Boulevard, kind of as you're going west, or I'm sorry, eastbound, um, on Angler Boulevard. This is kind of the corner, um, of the building. So the main entrance is on the right-hand side there, um, which will have kind of that second story atrium to really pronounce, uh, the main entrance there. So again, the fire department will have kind of that main presence on Angler Boulevard, um, that you'll see on the front of the building. And then the police department will be oriented, uh, adjacent to that main entrance into the building, kind of towards the south side of the site. Um, and a better look here on the middle image and then kind of that look of, of the fire department side, bottom here. Um, so some of the elements that I just want to point out, um, which are refined and you'll see better detail. Subsequent submittals here, but trying to bring in some brick detailing. So the majority of the fireside would have kind of that Chaska brick application, um, and bring in some of those brick detailing like some archways over the windows, um, some, um, soldier coursing, uh, along some of the kind of midpoint areas of the building, um, arched, uh, openings for the apparatus space. Some punch windows on the second story, again, some arch elements and some of the windows there. And those again are meant to kind of tie in some of those elements that were seen on that historic fire station uh, building, um, but also we're not trying to completely mimic, um, that building and and what it looked like, but bring in, um, these elements in more of a contemporary way, but also have that nod to its history. Um, I also wanted to give an update on, um, the parks and I also wanted to give an update on the Parks and Recreation Commission and their review of the plan. So they did have a meeting last night, so we weren't able to include this information in the original staff report. But this was kind of their first look at the plan, just to get initial feedback from the Park and Rec Commission based on the concept plan. And this is more so their commentary towards, you know, what the concept plan is showing for the park and how it relates to the overall site and what's changing with it. So I do want to read off those comments. So the first bullet point is they are supportive of the park plan as shown on the concept. They do iterate the need or preference to have access to the playground and trails as long as possible during construction. Obviously, there will be a period where it has to be shut down. So they're, they're just emphasizing to keep it open as long as possible. They do have a preference or an emphasis to use underground stormwater storage tanks to preserve the size of the park as much as possible. So I don't think I touched on it too much in my previous slides, but there are a couple ponds on site, both on the western side here that are being looked at as areas that ponding could be expanded to, to meet the stormwater requirements for the site. What comes out of that is, you know, there is a direct effect or impact on the park area if these ponds do get expanded. But as we heard before with stormwater, there are, you know, other ways to look at stormwater and meet our requirements. So is there a way to do some underground storage tanks in addition to expanding some of the ponds? There's still some of that analysis that needs to occur to see how that works from just meeting the overall requirements, but also the overall cost of what, what that would mean from a design perspective. Because if you start to go underground, it is a solution, but it is a costly solution to treat stormwater. So I think one of the, the big kind of push and pull effects of this plan right now that we're still working through is, you know, how much ponding can be achieved on site while also creating a park area that's sufficient for Meadow Park. So that's why they bring up that comment as to, you know, how much can we put underground for stormwater to preserve the size of the park as much as possible? But they did also add that if there was a need to add to the ponding on site and as a result of there being a loss of park green space, they did recommend that whatever cost savings is achieved from going that method versus all underground stormwater tanks, that some of that cost savings be put into the actual apparatuses and surfacing that they use on the park. So can the, the playground and the shelter and the tables and the other amenities that are within the actual area of the park be enhanced in some way to really create a nice park there? And then also considering if there is a loss of green space to make the playground surface more of a rubberized surface versus woodchip so that there is additional flat surface to be achieved on the playground site. And then another comment, looking at the overall parking lot design to see if there's any additional green space that can be achieved by modifying any part of the, the parking lot there. I think that's just an overall general comment to see if there's other ways to look at the overall site plan to see if there's ways for us to gain more park area as a part of that. And then that relates to kind of the overall parking that's planned for the site. They had a comment on proof of parking for the police and for further analyzing that to see if that's, that area can be green space or grass area if the parking is not needed right away. So just as we mentioned before, so some things to work on for the preliminary to middle is the stormwater design. We're still very at concept right now, but we are in, in the process of working through some storm, stormwater design methods on the site, which also ties into kind of the overall park space. So having continued coordination with the Parks and Recreation Commission on Meadow Park and as things are evolving there. So with that, we are asking to make a motion this evening to recommend approval of the concept plan for the public safety facility, and then based on the conditions that are listed in the staff report. If this is to move forward this evening, it would go to city council on the following Monday from now, which is Monday, September eighteenth. Happy to answer any questions. I also want to note that we have two representatives from CNH Architects here, Brooke and Quinn. They have been helping us through this process and can also assist in answering questions if we can.
Thank you, Liz. So at this time, it's not a public hearing, it's just a concept plan.
Correct, yep, no public hearing.
However, you know, we will, people would like to address the commission. We could certainly take questions. Is there anyone on Zoom?
We do have a few people on Zoom, so.
First, I'd like to bring it to the commission and discuss if there's any questions for staff on this project.
I've, I've got a question. Have you guys been working on Angler Boulevard itself in terms of how it's going to be handling the situation? Just because you look at when middle school, East and West get let out, you can't even get on Angler Boulevard. So how, how is that being addressed?
And I, I can speak, maybe not as directly, and Nate might be able to speak more in detail, but we have been in ongoing meetings with Carver County and the design team that's doing the improvement work on Angler Boulevard. So this is all a part of kind of that master plan for the Angler and Highway forty-one improvements. So they've, we've been very involved in that process. So it's, it's been a big part of the discussion and how all of that works.
Trying to refrain to the roundabouts that will eventually be there.
Correct.
If we open, open up traffic.
Yep.
Yep, so, yeah.
The timing of this would be such as that it coincides.
County is pursuing, and so there was a corridor study that was done a few years ago that looked at really entirety of, of Angler Boulevard, starting from where it meets with Chaska Boulevard on the east edge of town, and headed all the way out to Oconia, right? So within the last, you know, year or two here, Carver County has really been focusing in on the stretch that goes between Veria Road and what is the?
Park Ridge.
Park Ridge Drive, yes. And, and doing some implementation there. Their eyes are on end of next year to maybe begin, you know, early work on it. I think it's more likely we're looking at twenty-twenty-five that you'd really see construction at some point. You know, dates and things are not known yet. But the plan and the, what the corridor study called for is for a roundabout at Veria Road, a roundabout at White Oak, and then a roundabout at Park Ridge Drive.
And Highway forty-one.
Yes, so Highway forty-one, there's also a roundabout being looked at there as well. So, you know, all of, all of that is being looked at, and that's being worked through its own process, which is, you know, separate from this one. But we are in direct coordination with the county on, and they're fully aware, right, that there's a public safety center that's going to go here. All these improvements are going to be able to handle and respond and react, right, to emergency vehicles and emergency situations, lights are on. We're looking at how we can incorporate sort of, I guess, a hot alert signals to, for, for motorists at the access points of the public safety center so that that can be activated through the opticon system as they're exiting the public safety center. There's, you know, some, there's ways that we can have lights flashing and notifications and things like that going. So people know that there's a safety vehicle, a public safety vehicle wants to enter. And also, as we get to that roundabout at forty-one in Angler, we're looking at different ways that, there may be ways to provide signalization there to alert vehicles that they need to be moving over as they're entering and maneuvering through that roundabout too. So there's a number of things that we're looking at and other treatments on how you create wider shoulders so people have room to pull off. We're having all those discussions actively right now.
The green space loss around the park. It seems like it's significant. What?
Was it looking?
And how was the calculation?
Because it's most, I mean, I know the parcel is three-point-two, but obviously that's not all available green space with the park have there, but.
Yeah, I think we just did a rough estimate. The overall park area, including the playground and the green space, that's kind of the usable green space is about an acre in size today. It's hard to say what the calculation is right now with the concept plan. It is, it is less than that. I can say that. But I can't really give a number on it because it's still in flux in terms of what's being proposed.
And what, just, just reminder too, you know, this is a concept plan and what we, you know, this is typical with any project, right? As we move into preliminary, that's where the grading plan comes forward and the, and those, you know, stormwaters fully understood and how that approach is going to be. So those are things that are in the earlier stages right now is, you know, we're still at concept here. We're needing, you know, your recommendation and council's approval before, you know, preliminary can be pursued. You know, truth be told, we're beginning to look towards that, right? That work is beginning to be done. But until that grading plan can really gel and be understood with stormwater, you know, it's hard to really give a definition as to what that space is going to be. There will be an impact.
Right.
About it.
Right.
Kind of piggybacks with that one is the design of the building. It's primarily a one-story building, taking up a lot of space when there's nothing saying that it couldn't be, couldn't fill in the second story and create green space that it's consuming with the one story. So to me, that was the part where I think we're losing the ability exercising the space that's currently there by changing the design of the building. And to your point, you're saying, well, with this concept plan, but if we don't push on things now, then it's not going to happen later. And if we're just going to say the building design is pretty hard set, then it basically says this is what the green space is going to be because the building is not going to change.
So why just the one story versus, versus building up?
Yeah, so I, and I think the architects can speak to that. I'll say at a high level, the, the process that has come, you know, has been pursued here to design this has been very much engaged with the police department and the fire department and very much focused on operations and efficiency of the building to be able to meet the needs of what they need to do. I think I'll stop there and I'll refer, you know, to our architect team to maybe build on that.
Evening commissioners, I'm Quinn Hudson with CNH Architects and Brooke Jacobson as well. We're both principals and leaders on the design for the station. First thing that comes to mind, and I'm sure Brooke will add into this, but Nate started to pick up on it is operational. The portions, the, the fire station is two-story, and so those portions are out there. The part that's mostly one-story and some basement functions is the police. And operationally, it was very important to the police that they flowed together and interacted and acted as a single department, and they didn't want to segment different portions of that to an upper level, you know, and separated from that. It also was consciously decided and considered as part of respecting the single-family homes to the south to place the lower, single-story portion of a building design on that south direction to, to do that. So those are the two things that I can think of that you add to that.
To Quinn's point with that, we were trying to not have a second story, you know, right up against the southern residential area. And we did look at many options, and we did have some areas where we were trying to, to place some of the police functions up on the second floor. But as we worked through it, just operationally, it wasn't working for the police department. And we're getting down to very small amounts that could get placed on the second floor and trying to, we'd have a very small area just above police that second floor. And because of the distance between police and fire where we have second floor for the fire, there without operational divide and that kind of center, public classroom space, the adjacencies just weren't working out.
It does look like there's a fair amount of building space. So with the parking and the armory in the garage and the training, SWAT, the building support, you're saving green space there, like I mean.
We tried to put as much down as we could that worked operationally. And when we looked at what was left to put up on the second floor, it was basically the, the dorm suite. So it was just one small little area that really worked. Because the other, only thing we could have done is maybe moved the, the break room upstairs. But then now they have, you know, patrol that are going from the second floor all the way down to a basement and just operationally, that flow didn't work for them.
And the apparatus space are essentially two stories already, right? So you can't utilize that. So there is a second story of training in between the apparatus space, fire residence, which is utilizing second story on the north side.
Okay.
So I mean, there are like twenty-nine parking slots under that, right? So is there any room to more, add more there? And then we can reduce some parking over here and increase the green space?
So the majority, well, all of the parking except for one stall is for the patrol cars themselves. The remaining stall is just for the future SWAT vehicle. All of the parking above ground is for staff purposes with just a handful of stalls. I think we talked in the range of six or seven stalls where patrol temporarily could come in and park there while they need to go in and drop off evidence and then come back out. So if it's nice outside, they don't have to go all the way down to the garage for that access. Part of it also was, while we could, we actually had more stalls in the garage early on, but trying to maintain costs and keep square footage numbers down. We went down to what was the right amount for the police department and keeping square footage for the total building down as well.
And that's based on the projected growth of both departments? So we have kind of an idea where they're going there, correct?
Right.
Okay.
And there's studies on that.
Yeah.
What is the, along with, potentially with the projected growth, along with this facility serve, what's its useful life?
So, well, we're always building, our goal is a fifty-year lifespan when we do public facilities in that range.
When we look at the scale of the building, what we're considering is, and we're thinking about staffing and how that's going to grow, we're looking all the way out to full build out of the community, which we're expecting to happen in the next twenty-eight years, right? And so there was a staffing study that was done a number of years ago to look at both staffing gaps that currently existed, which the city has been initiative to kind of fill that. But then also looking out as to, okay, when we're fully, fully built out in community and we're, you know, fully developed, we kind of have an idea of what to expect our population to be, what to expect employment to be and those sorts of things based on, you know, the areas that we expect to develop. And then you can begin to break down and, and begin to think about, you know, similarly sized communities with similar styles of, of, you know, land use mixes and things, what a fire department, what a police department needs to look like at that point, right? So, so we're looking at that and then saying, okay, if we're going to have that, we need to scale the building, you know, to the size that we're presenting here.
Strategic communication to the folks like the email here that, that are concerned about the loss of the parkland and stuff that really should be communicated then. Because it's not like we just said, yeah, we just want to plow a bunch of grass over.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Cut out and.
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we're not starting out with the desire to remove the park, right? And I don't think we're proposing that either. But yeah, I, we, we can't honestly go through this process and say that there's not going to be an impact. So trying to figure out that balance. In fact, I would say that for the fire department in particular, and I think the police department certainly agrees, but the fire department has experienced it because they live there right now, that interact, that interplay with, with the, with the. But the fire department has experienced it because they live there right now. That interact, that interplay with, with the, with the park is important. There's a lot of folks who come, I, I'm guilty of this and maybe, I don't know, since I'm a staff person at Chaska, it's a little easier, but. I know this is true for a lot of folks, they're, you know, you bring your kids to that park, you can play there. And firefighters may be, you know, doing some sort of exercise. They get their equipment out, they're going to sit with the truck. And you can just walk on over and strike up a conversation. I know the firefighters appreciate that. They like having that opportunity for community. Engagement and that's an opportunity I know the police department is excited about. You know, often for them, and it's true for the firefighters too. When they're engaging with people on their job, it's not the best situation in the world, right? They're not necessarily seeing people on their best day. So creating those opportunities and taking advantage of those opportunities to do that and have those positive interactions. Is really critical to the public trust that's necessary for those departments. So. I think they look at this park as, as an asset and amenity that not only serves the neighborhood. But also helps with their mission to connect with the community positively.
Slightly coexist.
Right, exactly.
It's been a focus and trying to do in the design, you know, we've got some lines shown on the concept, but we've been developing that further. Where we're trying to make strong connections between the park area and the front entry. There's, there is certainly opportunities for a public to come in at any time in the lobby. Explore the fire departments museum, use restrooms, you know, and have activities, so. I think there's something to gain in that aspect as well.
Yeah, right in there, there's a, actually a, a three-story section to the building for, for training.
Behold tower, which is staring on the backside. So this is not on Engler and it's, and it's screened from the residents from. On the one-story building. So you really don't see much of it, but there's a portion of the back tower where you hang the hoses for one. And secondly, you give them the opportunity to do onsite training that they need to be doing on a very regular basis. Creating that third-story height allows them to use the aerial ladder truck. And some taller rappelling and some things that you can't do at a lower elevation.
That works as training.
Yeah, so in that center area between the two sides of the apparatus space, it's that bottom portion that, that sticks out. And it, so it creates that third, third level for them to ladder up, but also they have access to get up onto the roof. It has a flat roof. With parapet walls and they'll rappel down that and ladder up to that as well.
General, I think the, the look of the building looks great. I mean, looks really nice and well thought out. The fencing around it, there's not going to be like razor wire, is there?
No barbed wire, no razor wire.
Decorative metal fencing, we're looking at eight feet and just that top portion that, that curves out.
Right.
For security purposes, but everybody wants it to look nice and be able to have good visibility through it. Police would like to be able to see out through it too, so. And also when we, at the neighborhood meeting, I think all the comments were, were mostly around the park and everyone had positive things to say about the, the building and. Even though it was getting closer to them on the, on the south side as well.
Well, it's hard to, I mean, I've always been a proponent of parks and so it's hard to, it's hard to argue in this instance that we're losing our park a little bit. But I mean, we're gaining public safety and it's like, you gotta have, and it's a great location for the fire. Station in the center of Chaska and I think it's a better location for the police. So until teaming them together, there's going to be, you know, a little bit of consequence there, but. We may apply what, what they're gonna put there. Is it going to be like a swing set or a jet? What are they, what's the, what's the intention of it's known yet, but. It'd be good to see. Now it'd be the park department, park board kind of. They're ultimately going to have the final say over that, correct?
Yeah, the way I'm anticipating it right now. Is, I think you could expect to see the process be very similar to what was pursued for Savannah Oaks Park. So you might remember that park that's in, well, it's, yeah, it's in your backyard. It's, so it's in the, it's in the harvest neighborhood and that was the process that went in front of you all in that. I mean, kind of the, the boundaries of that park and access points to that park. But you know, what the specifics of that place set ultimately turned out to be and how, you know, people navigated within the park and. The different areas and how they're used. That had its own, you know, neighborhood engagement process that the parks department led. And the parks board weighed in on to come to that. So I'm imagining that, you know, we're going to see something similar here where we'll talk about what are the boundaries or the edges of the park and. You know, the, how does the public safety facility best connect to it? How do we have those trail connections that. Are getting to the neighborhood for that access, but specifically, you know, is it a. Slide in a swing set or, you know, monkey bars or, you know, what, right? What are, what is that apparatus within there? That's a discussion that we would seek to engage, you know, with that neighborhood, work if you the parks. Board to truly advise that process, yep. That'd be consistent with how we typically would do a park.
I'll just verify with you.
I meant to have the full flow, i.e. having the, the police access to the west. Off of that Western Drive. I'm just wondering, I mean, basically finding space is like, is there a way to be able to find space by not having that. Access points and basically saying that.
Yeah, for police, it's really best if we have two ways out of a site so that if there is any sort of incident on the east side that for some reason. That gate or whatever goes out of commission, they have another way route out. So if there's. You know, any unrest in the area and it, and it's happening, they have to another way out of the site essentially. But they don't get trapped in there. The other thing, it allows it to do is allow the police staff to, to enter on that west side and not disrupt any response flow that's happening on the east side.
So the east side will be mostly like calls come in and like.
Yep, patrol is going in and out and allowing apparatus to return for the fire side.
Yeah, okay.
It'd be very unusual that a response would go out the east side.
Right, so that's more coming in, leaving for the day, whatever squad cars went out the east side.
I have, I mean, it's more of a like a comment or suggestion kind of. We are building a big public safety facility, like a city is doing all these things, right? Did you consider anything like adding solar panels or anything like renewable energy? So just. I mean, reduce carbon footprint, I mean, I, because if we, in this kind of this size of the building, if we have those things going forward. Probably that will reduce from the city side efforts.
Yeah, I think we're already trying to be proactive on that in terms of how we can bring in some renewable energy, so we. Options to bring in some solar panels on top of the, the roof there.
We're, we're currently sizing like the roof of the apparatus base to be able to handle future solar panel load on it. So that if that's a decision the city would like to do in the future, that they could easily add them.
Now I'm not sure. We do have, we do have people virtually, right? So we should. It's been a long time since we've done this, so you go ahead, like.
If there's anyone online and you'd like to add some comments, please raise your hand and we can take you one by one. Seeing anyone raise their hand. Kevin, if you just want to keep an eye out in case anyone wants to speak, let us know.
Yep, well done.
That's what they were back to us again. Is there any further questions or?
I guess the only question I have is the logistics of how you build this and keep the existing fire station open.
Yeah, what, that is good. I was thinking that earlier, I forgot about it. What are we going to do with this, with the fires?
They gotta park them at their own house.
Yeah, yeah, we'll just. Are you volunteering? That's going to be the trickiest one to find a house.
Of course, quite a bit.
They do get lunch there. Then maybe they're golfing, I don't know, but. But yeah, in, in all seriousness, we do need to have a temporary location for the fire station to locate, you know. Fortunately, obviously the police department can continue to function here until, you know, the building is ready for them, but for the fire. We're evaluating a number of different locations as to where we could put a temporary facility to handle, you know, their time away, so to speak. And what we're looking at would be kind of almost a tent-like structure. For those of you who maybe attended the Ryder Cup. You saw, you know, those sort of tent-like multi-story structures in some locations. It'd be that flavor, right? So, but, but it would be a very large kind of temporary warehouse. Like building that would have overhead doors with it. And these are the sort of buildings that are often deployed in a disaster response type situation. And so, you know, these things are available, they haven't used for not, you're creating anything new, but the question is where do we put it, right? And so there's a number of different locations that we're looking at and trying to evaluate what's going to fit best for that term. On the horizon here, I don't want to overcomplicate things too much, but we do have municipal service building. As the next step in the city's, you know, plans for improvements to its city facilities. And we don't know what exactly that's going to look like yet and we're going to have to go through a process much like we are. Here with the public safety facility, but I think it's reasonable suspect that if we're going to be making some major changes there. There may be temporary needs for that building. So we're sort of thinking about that as well as we're considering the needs of the fire. Also taking a long view on it and thinking that, well, that long-term, that short-term use for the fire may turn into a short-term use. For at least some of the municipal service building functions is that project is going forward and that'll come into. You know, better focus here as we're moving forward in initiating that project. Excuse me.
Doesn't need swing space.
Yes, yep, yep.
When do we think that the whole entire project will take then?
I don't know if you all may be better to answer that. I've heard eighteen months-ish for a build.
Yeah, so we're, we're looking at roughly eighteen months is what the construction manager is estimating. So with a spring construction start. Eighteen months from then, we're talking spring of next year.
I believe Bartley online has a comment if you have a moment.
Are you able to hear me? Thank you. So I had a question about the location of the generator and I think it's a transformer location. Are those something, are those things that run all the time that are loud and. Just that are loud?
Thank you for the question. This is, I, the two items there, first of all, the easy one, the transformer, that's. Just electrical box with things aside, that's like any transformer that's around a community, doesn't have a sound to it. It is active live all the time because you power to the building at all the times, but again, that, that's not something that has any. Sound source to it at all. The generator is something that runs. Two times, it runs when the power is out for an emergency. And whatever, you know, reason that is, but it's usually pretty infrequent, but storm related is most common reason for that. And then the other time that runs, it runs for a twenty-minute period, like once a month to. Verify that it is in working order because it's critical that the generator is working to support public safety at all times. The, the, the test run is typically run in the middle of the day. At some point, as some weekday and just so it is not much, but I will add that the typically concern with that is sound and I assume that might be your, your concern as well. The generator is being, first of all, it's a natural gas generator, so it's a, you know, quieter motor system. Than diesel would have been. And then secondly, it is inside a sound rated enclosure itself. And then in addition to that, we're building walls around the. The generator to further not only improve the looks of that, but also further reduce the sound. So if, when it's running in the parking lot at the police station, you'll hear like an. A small truck running or something and just idling in the, in the background from a distance, it. Cuts off quickly and it's not something you'd likely hear from off the site at all.
Would it be emergency only or twenty minutes once a month?
Okay, Quinn, there's, if I'm not mistaken, there is a generator onsite today for the very same.
There's a generator onsite. If I were to compare, it's obviously a much smaller generator, much smaller building. It's also an older generator and it's not as sound controlled as, as what we would be having.
Thank you. I appreciate the feedback there, the, the information there. Also with construction. You know, what kinds of debris and disruptions going to be caused? So our backyard backs up to the fire station. We have a swimming pool. And we are concerned about, you know, all the construction debris and the dust that's going to happen. Just curious about. You know, what kinds of things, you know, is it really going to affect us that much or. Just any feedback with that would be appreciated.
So, so the question is about potential impacts of construction. Yeah, so. Standardly on any construction site, you know, there's going to be some grading, so there'll be some earthwork that'll happen, which can cause some dust. But dust control is a part of that operation, so you'll see them. You know, if it's dry and it's creating dust, you know, spreading water and other ways to control that. As far as debris goes, I think, you know, the expectation is that the construction site is being run in a, in a clean and. You know, efficient manner. So the city are, is already engaged with a construction management company. And RJM is their name. They've been helping us through the process in, in design and, and, you know, working hand in hand with everyone. To think about, you know, how the phasing could occur, you know, they're already thinking about. That work and they've got, you know, ample experience managing large-scale construction projects across the metro area. And so, you know, they'll be monitoring that, making sure that there's not, you know, unintended spill over effects and I think. I think it's fair to say that as we get into construction, you know, those neighboring properties would be. Made aware of points of contact that if, you know, things do happen unexpectedly, right? That you know who to contact and make sure that. That is brought to someone's attention and that it can quickly be remedied. So I think, you know, from the city's perspective, it's going to be important. You know, that we're running a tight ship out there.
Thank you.
I read something on the, the Birmingham, on the. All the mature trees are going to be removed and replaced with something mature. And there's no opportunity to, to, to save any of those. I get. This isn't necessarily the tree side thing. This is more the, they have mature coverage right now. Is there any way of saving some of that mature coverage?
Yeah, so just the nature of. The, you know, the amount of movement that used to occur, right, with that berm and what's going to go on where the berm is currently located. There's, there's just too substantial of a change to be able to really successfully save trees out there. Our goal and what we'll do is we're developing that landscape plan is to get, you know, establish. As healthy of a presence as we can from the onset. So that may mean that we're putting in. You know, as large a trees as possible, right? In, in order to help, you know, get that process moving as far as getting, you know, getting it established and getting some height. There's a give and take there too. Sometimes when you move trees that are more mature, they're less adept at. You know, handling that change. And, and so there's a balance that needs to be struck where you're going to get trees in there that you can anticipate, they're going to have a nice, long, healthy life. In that new location, rather than bringing a tree that, you know, is more likely to, to not survive. Often relocating mature trees, especially, you know, the size that they're at today can be very challenging. And sometimes you find yourself, you're. And sometimes you find yourself here in a spot where, um, and I I'm not speaking specifics to any. Tree out there right now, but you can get in a spot where. Trees are or or the plant that you're trying to relocate as well into its lifespan to begin with, and so you may. Put in a lot of effort to relocate that mature tree and only get, you know, a few years out of it. So there's, there's that balance that needs to be struck out there, but I get your point. I mean. Getting getting some height established to the extent that we can from the onset is something certainly that we're gonna try to achieve.
I hear a comment that some of the feedback was they don't want a whole line of trees, they actually want some grasses and trees, just kind of mix it up a little bit. Is that, I thought I heard that.
That's, yeah, that's the feedback that was heard at the neighborhood. Um, and I think that's an opportunity also as we're moving forward, there would be ongoing discussion with that neighborhood. Um, to talk about, hey, you know, we heard you, here's how we're responding, but what do you think, right? At the end of the day, I think the city's. This, you know, the city's got some interest in what gets planted there, um, because from a security perspective, there's things the PD. Has some interest in, you know, preserving the ability to look through. There's concerns about, um, you know, deciduous trees and how they are. Planted in proximity to the fence because someone could scale the tree to get over the fence. Not trying to give too many good ideas out there, but. But that is something that we're looking at. Um, but I think there's a lot of opportunity to say, okay, you know, neighborhood, here's a thought that we have, but what would you like? And, you know, we can work with you on it.
Which goes back to my discussion here on the phone saying, I, why are we enabling where the armory is? Like, you know, why, I think, not that anyone's gonna scale the fence, but like, I don't know, it's like you're telling, well, here's the swat, here's the armory, here's the. So anyway, um. Looks good. I mean, I. I think it's great for the city. Bringing it back to mission. Do we have any other comments or we'd like to round this out?
Commissioner Brass, um, uh, Bartley did have another comment if you did wanna allow that.
Sure.
Bartley, feel free to unmute.
All right, I just wanna make a comment about the the, we want the green space where it should be, like by the park. But as far as the trees go, where the berm is, that's now gonna be going down to five feet. Everybody's really happy with that coverage that is there. That is, you know, the on the south side. So. Seeing that everybody wanted more green space, I mean, it's true to keep the green space where it is. But everybody's really happy with the privacy that the trees allow.
Got it.
That's it.
Yep, thanks. So going forward, preliminary plat will engage with the neighbors, get feedback, come up with some landscape plans and enable me to next iteration to us.
Okay, this is the plan.
Well, with that, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to recommend approval to the city council, a concept plan for the public safety facility, subject to the following nineteen conditions.
So that's a first, Commissioner Gori. Is there a second? Okay, Mr. Hassan, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Post, motion carries. Thank you for coming and explaining.
Thank you.
So. Other business. There is none. Receive other media minutes. I think I will hereby receive those. And. Juror.
I I have uh something to offer up.
Do you?
Okay, if the adjournment can be paused for one second. Okay, all right. Um, I just wanna let you all know that uh. We are in the early stages of launching a safe routes to school planning effort with Clover Ridge Elementary School. Are you having a hard time hearing me?
Just a little, yep.
I'll move the mic. We are in the early stages of launching a uh safe routes to school planning effort with Clover Ridge Elementary, so we're working um in partnership with. Uh, the principal over there, Nathan Slindy. The city pursued and was successful in getting a grant through Bin Dot uh to to do that plan. As a result of that, what we get through that grant is access to technical assistance. So Bin Dot. Contracts with the consulting firm Alta, uh, consulting is their name.
I still must have missed, you're getting a state rush of what?
A safe routes to school.
Safe route.
Yes.
Okay, it sounded like all one wreck, I wasn't.
Sorry, sorry, I'm muddling. And so, so we're working with them. Uh, the the school is actively at this stage in the game. Uh, we're trying to do some data collection. That entails some survey work. And there's a Wiki map that's out there where folks can. Put points on the map and draw, it's, you know, talk about their routes to school and things that they like or dislike about. How the current neighborhood is designed around the school. And so, so that's out there. The school's working to target uh. The families who go there, uh, you know, and to get their input. Uh, we will also be as a city, uh, trying to get that out and targeting the neighborhood. Um, so you might see a post on Nextdoor if you're in that neighborhood, um, and directing you to that survey in the Wiki map. Uh, we're talking about a few other methods to try to get the word out. I will follow up uh tonight's meeting. Uh, you may see it tomorrow. Um, with an email to you all, so you can go and see that survey. Um, take a look at that Wiki map, and if you have, you know, folks that you know who live in the neighborhood, if we have interest in participating, I. I'm guessing there's at least one commissioner who may. You know, I, we appreciate your help kind of spreading the word and and trying to gather that feedback. Uh, as we go through the year, uh, we'll continue to, you know, gather some data. There'll be a process working with the school. And, you know, towards the end of the school year, the goal being that there's a plan in place. Um, that guides implementation. That can mean a whole lot of different things. It can mean. Ideas for improvements to, um, you know, the city infrastructure surrounding the school. Improvements that could be happening on the campus, um, that helps with, you know, safety and walking, but also safety and access for. And circulation for vehicles and buses and every other mode of transportation that someone might use uh to get to school. Um, but then there's also ideas around encouragement and education and some of enforcement uh that go into that too. Um, so maybe there's, you know, there's activities that can be done at the school, um, to help educate kids around how to be safe to get to school. Maybe there's. Ways to incorporate that into the FIAD program, for example. There's some schools who will do more intentional, uh, they'll call them uh like walking buses. Um, where there might be meeting points within a neighborhood and then a parent or volunteer helps lead the kids uh to school from that meeting point. Things like that. Um, I'm not saying any one of these things are gonna happen or, you know, uh, certainly will be a part of the plan, but that's the sort of the flavor of where these sorts of things go. So it'll provide a roadmap that both the city, the school district can be working on, um, at that school. And and just try to continue to enhance the walkability of of that neighborhood and safe access for kids to get there, so. Part of that was inspired by conversations we had uh last year, right? As development is coming through and being implemented in that neighborhood. Uh, concerns about the impacts of that school. Um, and although we had been having these conversations with the principal for some time. Uh, now seems like the right time to try and pursue this, so, yeah.
Days or something. Supposedly.
Yeah, I heard within.
Yeah.
They put the date out there and like.
Be prepared for the morning of the twenty-fifth, is what they said, so we're gonna hold them to it. I'm I'm driving. We're going. Yeah, I already seen, we're just going for it.
I mean, it's, yeah, it's been, oh, it's a long process. There's a lot of work that's still, you know, yet to be done. But I think it's exciting to see, you know, things coming together. I know people are anxious to to put it to use, right, so.
All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a. I'll second.
Okay, we've got Kerber and Olson, all those in favor?
Hi.
Pose, motion carries, clear adjourn.